Call meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Are there any questions or changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Justice approved. Review of the minutes from March 14th, draft meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes from March 14th are approved. Now there is a motion to recess the regular select board meeting to enter into a public hearing for the VCDP grant project proposal.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Introduction of guests.
All right, Travis, I think you're on.
Hopefully you talk better than I do.
I made no promises. So thank you all for having me here today. My name is Travis Sims. As most of you know, I am here on behalf of my company, Zion Growers. We are looking at purchasing the building next door, the old Procter Marble Company building. We have been working with Michael here on a grant that would allow us through the town to get a lot of our planning done for the building. This includes environmental studies, this includes architectural drawings, and basically everything that goes into it before we actually dig up anything or move any ground or anything like that. The town has been instrumental in this to this point, and we appreciate all the support and help because that's just kind of the way we do it. It's the same thing with St. John's Berry. We've had a lot of assistance from the town, backing, applying for things, and it's, you know, what we are doing is a support to the town as much as their support to us, and it's kind of that one hand washes the other. So that's why this has kind of been an important thing for us. It's also, as you can imagine, a very hefty project, so there's a lot that goes into, you know, supporting all of these different pieces, making sure that we have all the right information, making sure that the cap is done, the corrective action plan for environmental pieces, part of which has been done for that building, but there's obviously some pieces that need to be done. So that kind of lays out the basis for what we're doing and why we're looking for the assistance for it, because as I said, it is a larger project, and that's something that we just need assistance with financially to make sure that we can progress in the way that we hope to moving forward.
Any questions, by any? So we have the application.
Yeah, so you have a document on the table here that pretty much gives me authorization to apply for the grant. I've started the process, and all the way up to April 12th, it's open to the public, can come review our application at any time. I'll say right now, it's not thick, but we've got the needs assessment done, which was a large portion. So we've got that behind us, and Travis and I are going to continue to move forward and work together so that we can meet that April 12th deadline. And I'll also say that the VCDP department with the state has been really helpful along the way, and we've also got backing from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to help us out, and who's already preliminarily agreed to take on the administrative duties post-award.
Does anybody have any questions? No?
I have a question. What is the cost to the town of all this assistance and everything? Just does any cost occur, or is this just?
I'll let Michael speak to it more, but there really, there is no cost. We're basically just kind of the middleman supporting it.
Yeah, and there's a 10% match with which there's no memorandum of understanding agreed, you know, signed, but Travis and Brandon and I have spoke about this, and, you know, it's the understanding that they'll cover that 10%, and really, most likely, it'll be covered in administrative duties anyway, because a lot of that stuff is in contract ing. And it's probably worth saying, with the total amount of the grant it's for, it's $60,000.
Questions?
What is the purpose of it? What are you hoping to be doing?
So we are taking over the building for industrial hemp processing. We're going to work with the museum to keep them there, as well as some other tenants from the Rutland Planning Commission that's been there. People down there looking for additional space, so the tenants that are there, bringing in some new tenants, kind of whiteboxing the space, and then we'll be using a portion of the building, a larger portion on the first floor, for industrial hemp processing for fire. It's like, guys, go on easy on me, man.
A somber group tonight, it's like, oh. All right. If there's no further questions, is there a motion to approve the resolution for the VCDP grant application authority?
I have one question that just came to mind, and not to stop you guys. As far as it goes, the hemp processing, is there any, is that the, on your court? Is there anything else that you're planning to do besides that, or are you planning to expand anything else, or is that really just what you're sticking to? Is there something?
Well, our whole, our core role is just to do industrial hemp processing and get into moving forward in more than that, training vertically, basically creating products from that, but as far as, you know, moving into anything else, our focus and our only goal is industrial. Does that kind of make sense? Thank you. You're very welcome.
Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Granted the authority, so put that there. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
All right. The recess is ended, and the regular scheduled select board meeting will come to order. Okay. Any open public comment? All right. Guests, we have Stephanie Bort from LHMP draft presentation. Is she on?
She is not here yet. I'll send her a draft agenda, so what time is it? 6:08?
Oh, yeah. Wow. We breeze through you a lot, Michael.
That's always the last question.
That's a good thing. All right. So we'll go to good stuff. Anybody have good stuff?
So we've had two recent Procter graduates playing softball, Sidney Wood up at Norwich and Ally Omen at Cassaton, and this has been a pretty great weekend for them. Ally had her first collegiate home run, so that's always exciting there. And Sid played and went three for three. So it's nice to see our kids being successful, not just academically, but also when they choose to play a sport or do something outside the regular academic world and continue that success. So Ally was also on Dean's List this past, I think it was Dean's List, whatever the highest is at Cassaton, she was on over there.
A nice hit.
Yeah.
I also would like to recognize Bob Protavansky, and I know we always talk about, you know, the school and what our guys do with the roads and stuff, but I'd like to start recognizing citizens in our town too as well. And he's been recognized in the city of Rutland because he runs our wastewater treatment facility, and he got an award, and he just had an article written about the maintenance of that. So I think it's kind of nice to recognize people that live here too and their accomplishments, so.
He's a great guy.
You're not biased at all.
All right. Highway Department, Class II Highway Grant, submittal is complete.
Yep. And that's the only news I have for that. Just wanted you to know that it's out of our hands now.
Highway Report.
I don't have anything to add to that.
All right. Anything else on highway? Is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay. Delinquency Report. Everyone has that in their?
Yes. You have our most updated delinquency report. Curb stops have been inventoried better than they have been, and shut-off notices have been sent out. That's kind of strange to read, but the agreement with the asterisk next to it means they had an agreement and they were sent a notice of shut-off, okay?
They failed on the agreement?
Correct.
Okay.
And then also sent DISC, means they were sent a shut-off notice.
Yes. So it's like, if you add up the agreements that were not executed, and then it disconnects it, it comes up to a higher number in the teens.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Get an update?
Oh, yeah. John made my day with that. Write me up.
All right. Public Works Foreman Report. Any questions?
I have no additions to that either.
So a motion to go out of the Board of Water Commissioners and to the Board of Sewage Commissioners.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Willow Pump Station.
All right. So the State Wetland Specialist, I feel like I've been repeating this stuff, but I'm just kind of updating you as it comes. The State Wetland Specialist visited the site and did find evidence of wetland, but again, our engineers A&amp;E are drafting a permit now, and work is still expected to proceed on schedule.
So the Willow Pump Station project bid opening's been pushed back?
It has been pushed back to April 1st. We had a late question come in, and I think we're trying to get as many engineers as we possibly can, or construction companies to apply, so that's going to be pushed back to April 1st. It'll be open to the public. The lowest bid will be, they'll all be reviewed, but the lowest bid comes in as the expected winner. Our engineers will review it, as I'm sure you all know this process, and then you will approve that after the engineers have verified that they're qualified bidder.
Okay. And then the Public Works Foreman's Report is also included.
I do have an addition to that, because I didn't see it there. Champlain Construction did come and make repairs to the Sals Meadow Pump Station, so once I receive those invoices, they'll be forwarded on to Passif for reimbursement, because it was a while ago, but I'm sure you remember, the damages were caused by the storm.
So we're back to before the storm damage.
Yep.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions on Board of Sewage Commissioners? Is there a motion to go out of the Board of Sewage Commissioners, back to the regular select board meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Manager's Report.
I've got to say, I did enjoy the shameless self-promotion.
Did you like it? It took a little time to figure out which one, you know, wasn't too much.
Well, this one was.
Just seen the other ones. All right. So some of these, this is a long, kind of a long list, so some of them I'm just going to roll through with expectations. You may not have questions, but if you do, please interrupt me. I actually took a lister's training. It was, it wasn't four days long, but it happened over the course of four days for about four hours, just to become more familiar with the duties of our listers and assessors and what the tax man, woman, person does. I'm still the interim zoning administrator, and, but, but working hard to fill the position. There has been interest, but not enough interest, unfortunately. We got a sign outside, it's still on the website, and I'm asking every person that comes in the building on this. VCDP Grant Application Public Hearing. I've worked with, again, I've worked with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission to draft a needs assessment for the grant, and copies of the narrative are in your packet and available anytime during normal working hours here at the building. Mortimer Proctor Award Letter. This almost classifies as good, good stuff, but it's in the manager's report. The town has been awarded the following: An extension to the existing dock at Beaver Pond, equipment for Olympus Pool, American Legion grade markers, and for our yard to host concerts in the park this summer and have fireworks on the 4th, on the 4th of July. Total award amount was $14,389.62. The town has also been given the chance to justify its request to fund the construction of a playground at the skating rink. The Parks and Rec Committee held a work session last week, and a final proposal will be submitted to Mortimer Proctor on April 15th. Addition to that, I actually had a, someone who, who has installed many playgrounds in Rutland. He came today and looked at our site, and he's going to build something within the confines of our $42,000. I think that was the budget we anticipated. I should have something back from here, him, in the next couple of days, so it'd be exciting what we can get for our, for the money.
And then Wade, too, from the league is coming down to look at the site for insurance purposes, to make sure.
Yeah. And we've been working with Tyler, over in Rutland.
Okay.
And, you know, he's giving me information on best material to use, you know, engineered mulch compared to just regular mulch, and how often you got to replace it. So we're getting a pretty good plan together. I think we're having a good packet to submit.
He's really knowledgeable.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Who would have thought you've got a, you know, you don't have to just anticipate the area you need for, you know, swing set for swinging, you have to estimate how far the kid can jump from the swing. Anyway.
What was the amount on that playground? Do you remember?
I believe it was $42,000.
It was $47,000.
$47,000? Okay. Oh, thanks, Lisa. $47,000, or $42,000. And then I've got the Outer Creek Watershed Insect Control District updates on here, if any representatives wanted to provide them, but if not, the minutes are, are in your packet. Local Emergency Management Plan Workshop I attended. It was held by the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I have already updated the plan. I'll just send it out for review and hopefully have a final draft due by mid-April. They're due in May. That's an annual emergency management plan we've got to draft, which is different from the local hazard mitigation plan, which we'll talk about later. Some slates falling off the roof, so I called a company named All Roofing to come take a look at it. They, they did the repairs for, or they did the roof in 2015, so figured since they were on file, they'd be the easiest ones to get in here and check it out for us. They should be here in the next couple of days. They were supposed to be here last week. I'm not sure what happened, so. Unfortunately, and this in regards to the Vorac application, the town was not awarded for our grant proposal. We'll take it as a learning experience and try again next year with a more condensed project scope, I believe. Does anybody have any questions about that before I move forward? Down wires on Maple Street. I apologize, it took longer than I had hoped, but the lines have been repaired on Maple and Oak. They were owned by a company called First Light. If it wouldn't have taken so much time, for a joke, I would have put, I would have created a flow chart to show you what kind of process that was, to find out who owned that line. But at the end of the day, I figured it out, and it was owned by a company named Sullivan who sold over to First Light. But anyway, it's all done, fixed. And I actually spoke to Corporal Riley about it. He said the lines were really hanging too low to begin with, so. Hopefully it doesn't happen again, because I don't want to go through something like that here in the near future. And zoning admin and pool director search, again, I'm bringing up the zoning administration, but it's also worthy to note that we're looking for a pool director as well. You can come in here and apply, you can apply online, any way you'd like. Complaint about stumps along the side of Warner Street. A resident called to complain about vegetation debris, tree stumps more specifically along Warner Street, and John Corliss knows about them and will prioritize it appropriately. Just have three more here. 25 Grove Street right-of-way permit inquiry. I'm not sure if anybody's been to the site, but 25 Grove Street is right on the corner, and his driveway currently comes out onto Park, and he'd like to change it over to Grove. And he's going to do some other things to the house. So I was going to meet him on site, but I had a meeting Friday, so John Corliss went out there and spoke to him, didn't see any problems, and I'd also like to thank Dick Corner for kind of pointing me in the right direction on where to go with right-of-way permits. So he's still, he's resigned, but he's still very, a great resource, so, he's always there when I need him, so. Thanks to Dick. Planning Commission Position Opening and Reorganization. Congratulations to Carol Protavansky for being elected to the Chair of the Planning For anyone interested, we have an open seat to fill. Regular meetings are once a week, and, once a month, and the Planning Commission members get, do get a stipend.
It's once a month?
It's once a month, yeah. I got once a week here in my notes, but that's incorrect.
That's why no one's running.
That'd be a pretty good stipend, huh? And then lastly, Zoom Instrument Tour for Paltone. The Paltone Town Manager came by here because at the last town meeting, they voted to start hosting, to start having all their meetings on Zoom like we do. So I just gave them a bird's eye view of everything we got, and, and that concludes my manager's report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right. Should we circle back?
Circle back.
LHMP Draft Presentation.
I've got G. Carrington. Do you know who that would be?
G. Carrington.
Okay. You're asked, Stephanie.
G. Carrington. Michael doesn't want me to throw this. So he's quick about when people go on. Okay. Well, I'm Stephanie Bort, help planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, who has been working with a team of your Procter folks to update your local hazard mitigation plan. I brought a color harmon copy, Michael, for the public review copy here at the town office, but I'll be here with Lisa. And I did bring two extra copies for the planning commission, so folks who might be from the planning commission, bring that to your group. So I'm here tonight on behalf of your planning team to present their final, their final work. I was last here in November to present the work through the first half of the plan. We talked a lot about, at that point, the risk assessment and the hazard identification work that the team had done to identify the highest risk natural hazards to the community, and looked at what locations and assets are vulnerable to those highest risks. And then following kind of that midpoint in the process, the plan was out for public review period, and when the, when the team resumed work, they got down to developing the mitigation strategy to address those risks that had been identified in Section 5, and then rounded out the plan with a short section on how it will be maintained over time, and how things have changed since your 2017 plan. So tonight, as I said, I'm just here to present the full final draft. At this point, all, all the sections of the plan are complete and have been met with planning team approval, so they feel confident presenting it tonight to both the Select Board and Planning Commission members who've been invited to attend tonight, as well as the general public. As you recall, when I was here in November, an important part of this plan development process is providing opportunities for public engagement, so, you know, that's, that's why we're here tonight, to present the work and basically let you know that in terms of next steps, like you did at the midpoint, we'd set the public comment period to coincide with your next regular select board meeting in April, so I think it's the 11th. Yes. So at your April 11th meeting, if you'll just be setting aside a short period of time at some point on that agenda to, you know, discuss the plan as a board, accept any public comments that might, you know, that might come up during this review period, and then, you know, Michael will take care of forwarding those on to myself. And depending on the extent of the comments, they may be something that can be easily addressed, but if they're, if they're more extensive in nature and would affect some of the mitigation strategies, specifically the actions that have been, have been proposed, then, you know, we'd reconvene the planning team, we'd work through those, and we'd be back again to, you know, share those again, kind of how the, how the team had addressed those. So in terms of, you know, what happens after the April 11th public comment period closes, we'd be, we'd be finishing up the draft, and if there aren't any substantial review comments that come up during the comment period, I'd ask that the board maybe consider authorizing the planning team to go ahead and submit the draft to Vermont Emergency Management for preliminary approval. At that point, your, your plan is locked down. You're not expecting to make any more changes to it, because once you receive that preliminary approval from the state, the plan's returned to the, to the town for Select Board adoption, and then it's resubmitted for FEMA final approval, and it's that FEMA final approval date that will start the five-year window for this next cycle of the plan.
State approval usually takes how long?
They're really pretty quick with a turnaround, less than 30 days. You know, typically Caroline is, is within a couple of weeks of submittal, unless there's some kind of, you know, disaster that strikes, she's typically really, really good about getting comments back. So what you have in your packets are, in terms of the select board packets, are not only the final draft of the plan, but you also have the local mitigation review tool. So this is now all filled out with the page numbers and sections for which you'll find each of these federally required plan contents, and this is the review tool that the state will use to make sure that your plan meets all of those requirements. So I think I had shared a draft of that when I was here in November, but none of the data, none of the page numbers were filled in. Now you can see how things have all kind of tied together and where you'll hit all of those requirements in the plan. For what it's worth, I think it's a really nice plan. You had a really big planning team, you had seven members that represented a broad range of perspectives, and I think you have some really good, reasonable, and practical actions that have been recommended for implementation. You know, you'll find those all in Section 6 of the plan, and so.
I don't think the draft plan made it in the packet.
No, it may not have. I'm sorry, it's, it's pretty big.
Yeah, that's, that's not it.
Yeah, I had a copy online, and maybe I should have pointed you in that direction, so I apologize. It would have made your packet pretty beefy if I'd included that, so, but we will have a copy available now here.
Yeah, there's a, there is a hard copy here that I figured I'd leave for your public comment period to have on, available at the town office. Maybe Tom would share.
I'd be happy to leave mine as well.
But yes, it is available online as well. Question? Where?
Yeah, we were looking on the website for like 20, 30 minutes, but couldn't find it.
Oh, it should be on the first page. Oh, okay. Well, maybe I didn't add a link. No, I don't, no, I haven't, but I can.
Can you, please?
Yeah, I can.
So, yeah, I think originally there was a notice leading up to kind of tonight's meeting to let folks know that the draft was going to be presented and it would basically kick off the public comment period, so you may not have posted the link to the plan. If you went to the community announcement section of the Regional Planning Commission website, you'll find a link for it there. I don't typically post the review tool, but there's no reason that you can't. You just won't find it on our website. You'll find the plan. But feel free to post the review tool. There's, I don't think there's anything wrong with doing that. You know, it's.
I talked about it, there's just no link.
Okay, yeah.
And I think we said we weren't going to post it until
Today.
Yeah, and that's basically what it is, from March 20th to April 11th, this public comment.
So I'm available for any minor questions or if everybody's all set?
Do they have any questions now? Any other questions from anybody?
Do you have criticisms for, do you have criticisms for the plan? It sounded like you were, you said some good things, but you didn't say anything about what was missing or what drawbacks or
I don't know.
That looks good.
Yeah, no, I, I'm thinking Proctor's probably my 16th, maybe 16th or 17th town in the Rutland region that I've worked with, and I, I feel very strong about the effort of the planning team. They were very engaged, they provided really thoughtful input, you know, when, when they were asked to do their analyses and identify assets and locations, and then come up with projects. Though I felt there was a real clear connection between the vulnerabilities that they'd flagged and the projects that they'd set themselves up to try to accomplish. I didn't feel like their projects were too much of a stretch, that it was not going to really be something they could successfully complete. So, no, I, I feel like, you know, I basically facilitated the process, I provided them with a template and, you know, helped them fill in, fill in the sections of the plan, but the content came from the, you know, all the content came from the planning team members. And, yeah, I, they did a lot of work in between meetings. I think they did a really nice job.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Maybe to impress upon that, I mean, three, four of them were volunteer, so.
Yeah, I, I don't mind if Kevin Blongi, John Corliss, Ben Curtis, Tom Doty, Lisa Mizra, Michael Ramsey, and Joshua. So as I mentioned, you have a very, very broad range of perspectives, and I think that lent a lot to the process in getting the plan updated and making sure it was comprehensive.
I would say having Stephanie as a planner is huge. We've never known, and I could not attend every meeting because I had school rhythm, but I know when working with other and doing other projects, that having Stephanie as the facilitator makes projects much smoother, much easier, and you know you're going to have a very professional final project.
Thank you. I, I hope it's a useful tool for the community. That's kind of my bar. If it's not going to be useful to you, then I don't really feel like I've done my job well, so. I hope you find it an easy read, I hope you learn something new, and find it interesting, so.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, move on to action items from the board. The bills, I believe, are all signed?
Yes.
Sheriff's report. Liquor license for Franklin's. We have that to approve and sign if it is approved. Is there a motion to approve his 2022 liquor license renewal application?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She carries, we can sign that after. All right, Parks and Rec application from Matt Parker to be part of the Parks and Rec Committee. The Parks and Rec Committee met last week, and we, we as a committee approved him, so we want to bring him to the board to approve, so.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. She carries, thank you. All right, Emergency Management and 9/11 Coordinator Appointment, Josh Webb as 911 Coordinator for a term of two years, and Kevin Blongi as Emergency Management Chair for a term of two years. And we did, I know both Michael and I spoke, well, we got messages from him, so they both are willing to run again and do the two-year term, so.
They did say yes.
Yes.
Agreed.
Is there a motion to appoint Josh Webb as 911 Coordinator for a term of two years?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
She carries. Is there a motion to appoint Kevin Blongi as Emergency Management Chair for a term of two years?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Resolution we already discussed. We have that to sign, we'll sign that, too. All right. Town Manager to introduce suggested amended facility use agreement policy. Everyone has a copy in their packet?
The, the only big points I have towards this is I thought it would be advantageous for us to visit it since it came up at our last meeting, and I've had a good bit of people ask about facility use agreements in spring and, and summer on the way. I don't think we had a very robust policy in place. It was more like a cover page to the facility use form. This was downloaded from VLCT. It has not been reviewed by the town's attorney. I thought maybe it would be best to bring it to you all first to see if we were even interested in moving forward with it. The numbers I have in here are just placeholders, so, you know, user fee, I just assumed, we haven't really been charging a user fee, so kept it at zero. Maximum occupancy, I just kind of came up with, I thought they were pretty good numbers, but we can, I thought maybe a follow-up to that is maybe get with Passif to see what the occupancy loads are for the facilities anyway, and use those. And, oh, Lisa Mizra had a good addition, that the
Ballfields?
The ballfields should be put on there. The Village Green, I'm back and forth on, but at least for the pavilion, you know, if someone's kind of a wedding over there, I thought it would be good to have one. And, and the bigger point of it is, after doing a little bit more research, you know, it's my opinion that once good policy is adopted, it really just turns into a managerial task, you know? Do they have this? Do they meet this criteria? So it, I would suggest maybe passing over authority to sign them to me, and that, you know, that's only a suggestion, but it does make the process a little bit easier because I can work with people throughout the application. I say this because Passif isn't, Tulip's not free. It costs about $75, and that's the base. That's just to use the facility. If you get a clown there to make balloon dolls, it goes up to $250, you know, and that's where I stop, because I'm sure it just keeps going up and up and up, and that's not reimbursable. So to, to tell someone that we require it for the Select Board to review for approval, it gives the implication to someone that they could go through and spend the money, but it could get denied. So it allows me to work with them a little bit more, and, you know, I hope to this point I've shown that I'm pretty transparent, so I would, I would provide these, these facility use agreements in your packets still, so I wouldn't be just approving whoever here and there and keeping it hush-hush. You would, you would see who's using your facilities, and that's all, that's all I have on it.
Does it make sense?
I've also, I know that sometimes, well, maybe in the past, policies haven't been super visible by the public, and we don't have a lot of resources here in town, so I'm posting as much as I can on the website whenever I can, but if you'd like to come to a meeting early, or if you'd like to, if you see it on the agenda and you want to come talk to me about it before Monday, I'll have them on that table over there, or you can just come to me and say, hey, Michael, I saw that you, you're thinking about suggesting a policy to the board, just come see me and talk to me about it. It's, it's pretty much the avenue I have to take now until we get somebody on board that I can delegate the task, task to.
Can I suggest we take the next two weeks to kind of review this and then revisit at our next meeting?
At the next meeting.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Is there anything else anybody has? Motion to enter into executive session under the provision of VSA Title Section 313A to discuss the town's potential contract with Tom Doty in regards to the Willow Street sewer project activities that will negatively impact his property.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going into executive session.